We have, you know, a number of trees that need to be taken down. And we've had some volunteers volunteer to take those trees down. By the way, I just for curiosity sake, I talked to a guy, had him send me a bid to take down five of those trees. Ten thousand.
Wow.
You know my thank yous.
Ten trees?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is my.
That seems mild.
It hasn't.
I don't know.
How do you think? I had a guy come and let mine. He's gonna say it's mine.
Get top trees.
Yeah. Okay, that's Skyler. Right, his name is Skyler. Yeah. What does that say?
Three tall, get top trees.
Yeah, two tall, five trees.
Yeah. He's gonna do mine.
Three top trees. Yeah, but I heard about it though. They got the laws and he starts.
Mine has three tall, tall, with eight trees on it.
Okay.
Next one, that's tough.
Okay, his bid was there. Remove five dead trees, ash trees, on south corner of Park, including hauling off and cleaning up all brush and wood debris. Removal: five thousand dollars. Remove five dead ash trees in northwest corner of Park, including hauling off and brushing debris, five thousand dollars, for a total of ten thousand dollars. So for a total, that's a thousand dollars for tree, having to act. But we have good community volunteers who have promised to do that. And by the way, I would like to have a, I would like to have a motion to have a city cookout. For the community, in appreciation for all the help that we've got from here. We're coming in and going to Park and Dale and Carol going this over here.
Playground equipment.
Yeah, I would like to have a, a, a community cookout, not just in the city, but the entire community wants to come. And the city will buy the meat. And just to show our appreciation.
Like a covered dish then, or the, or the officer or amber or whatever.
Somebody can bring some baked beans.
I hear. You know.
Wait for me, yes, wait for me. Sorry, I volunteer if you like her.
She makes a lot, and actually I got another problem, I think, you know, so she.
Well, good.
They are good. Thank you.
Okay, could, could, anybody want?
Do we have a date or anything with, I don't know. I just wanna handle that.
Before the snow flies, hopefully.
Yeah. See, but then we could really do it here. Have a motion to approve it for, before we set a date on it.
I'll make that motion. To the community. As a community.
All favor, ask kind of, aye, cookout? All favor, motion carried. Now, how about a date? You know, you guys, you've been up here now, the community could have a little input on that too, with the, with the date that we could do this.
See, at a certain point, you guys are gonna be busy harvesting and all that.
As quick as you do this, the better, because you're gonna start getting into ballgames, harvest, you know.
There's a lot of other calendars.
Any later week of Christmas when it's snowing.
They can send every night, probably couple weeks.
So harvest is three weeks away, month away?
Week.
Week?
Okay.
They're already cutting.
It's been pretty quick.
Probably the tenth will start Saturday.
I don't believe this first weekend.
Thought we could quit.
Unless we.
Quit a little early that night.
Could be talked into quitting. No, what, do we have a date?
What is Saturday?
Sharon, September.
That's the seventh.
Yeah.
The tenth is seven, we have the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and twenty-eighth for Saturday.
You guys can get takeout, we have people can order it anyway.
How does the seventh sound?
Okay.
And this weekend, doesn't this?
Thirty grand. How about your tenth?
Tenth is the Tuesday. Fourteen.
The fourteen, how about the fourteen?
All you can do is set the date. Bride can't, make it, who can't, they can't. Kind of like setting the wedding date, you know, bride can't make it, well.
Single.
He said that you.
She made it.
You think you set a date.
She said that you didn't make it.
They can't, they can't.
All right, then, uh, the fourteen.
At what time?
We're trying to lunch meal, because it's starting to get dark earlier.
You wanted to do five.
Five.
Like five.
Yeah, well, we used to have the fall festival, they had that in, when they started at five.
I would think it was started at five.
So, we have five, five o'clock, something like that, buddy?
Where are you gonna hold it? Over at the. You grillin'?
I'm not grilling, I'm not good at grilling, I can't get any meals.
Are you good at grilling?
You can fix the fire.
Both fall festivals.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the, the agreed on date is the fourteen. Uh, probably forty, twenty-five o'clock. Five o'clock for the community cookout, and the city will provide the, the hot dogs or rocks or whatever. And. Should we bring our own drink? Oh, we could, we could probably provide, provide some pot.
Pot's a water.
Yeah.
Some water or tea or something.
Water and pot. Because I, I really did, I really appreciate these gentlemen that had really jumped in here and helped. It saved money, saved the city a lot of money.
Would that be carried in? Everybody bring something to it.
Yeah.
Bring a covered dish would be appreciated, yeah.
All right, good.
Would you? Yeah. Did you ask?
Y'all. I have no idea. I am.
I have for double day, this could be in that.
Don't we just make our menu here and put it up?
Yeah. It costs half of everyone's, from your side.
There you go.
Church, they have. It's like, you know.
Now, we can't put that in, or it depends on, on what the world, and the fair deal. Well, they did not charge us for the other.
For what?
What did you do?
Community.
Is it community board?
Yeah, it was. Community board.
Yeah.
You could ask.
I don't have the one.
I can still do that. For you. Isn't it like, yeah, huge?
Okay, one of those piece of plates, something like that.
Okay. Whatever you guys get, just give them receipts.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, now, we can, we can say it.
Whatever you get, leave the receipts, and I'll pay back, and we can tell those that the last thing is, so.
Shoot up through here was a straight shot.
People can bring coolers, but definitely shoot more than I care.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Now, we're now.
They always wanna sell them.
Okay. Yay.
Tracy? That was driving by, some more willow trees growing down there, is that a form? Yeah, is that, is that, uh, color's dog's cut those?
Uh, I went out and cut them this last spring.
Okay, well, there's willow trees, I don't know if, I've been tending to willows before. But these are willow trees.
Okay.
Cut them when you're able to, you need to treat them.
Yeah.
You did treat them last year?
Well, no, I didn't.
Okay, well, they probably need to.
I did treat them.
They'll be right back.
Yeah.
And the final, if I'm able, if I can do that, would you snipper the tanned saw?
They gave the seeds, our price, uh, price we put on?
Six, seven.
Six, twelve.
I got some.
Look, anyway. If you.
I got some, I think I might be trying to. So, no matter what, they're something so hard.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, if you don't just get some, like, receipt, you're gonna miss this.
So, what?
You just really wouldn't wanna do that if I were around.
Okay. Yeah. One last thing, Sarah, sewer bill probably. I don't think you might, we already have sewer bill, if they don't have water on it. Has it been unused? Do you have any comments?
I mean, discussions are there, but it's good.
I'd say the one.
Who?
John's.
That's about four bucks.
Something like that.
Something like that.
Sorry, guys, but we have so much background, waste it.
Well, if I remember correctly, when we had this discussion before, it was something about, that they weren't using them, then they should be capped off. But if they wanted to use them in the future, they would have to pay for that cap to be removed, or something like that, I don't know, do you remember, Sharon?
I don't know, I think, they have to, yeah, they remove the meters, I know.
So, there's no water?
No. There's yard, there's no water on here.
Well, I, you know, if there's no water either, then is there a, a charging to water?
No, no.
There was a discussion, you know, half, year and a half, two years maybe, something, who said that if they didn't pay it, it was gonna cost more, except they let them into sewer lines. So, it's fifty-fifty.
Well, if they're not even using water, then why they would be charged? Doesn't, doesn't make sense.
I do remember sharing though, when we were discussing that about the sewer, that's why, you know, we went ahead, the sewer paid off, everything. And we went ahead and charged sewer to residents, so we could build them enough money in there, so that if anything happens, sewer, hopefully, we would have that money to repair stuff. But, you know, they're trying to keep water. And they did go up in the sewer rate in here too, so.
Something to do with it being capped off. Something, at least, it should be capped off. There's no water going to.
Well, probably keep, wrap on the sewer.
Yeah, down to the, to the.
Down to the sewer.
So, what's your conclusion?
What does everybody think? Does everybody think the same thing? I'll make a motion that we do not charge sewer rates if there's no water on it, probably. No water being used on the, so, if the meters removed.
If the meters.
If the meters removed.
Yes, that's seconded.
Okay, you have a second?
Aye.
By Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carried. And that concludes my agenda, and you guys have your permission to go ahead and do your work, thank you.
I have, I have a question. My last meeting, or supposed to be meeting, Luke stated that there was still, fire department was still belonged to the fire and rescue association. That when we rescinded that resolution, that, he didn't say why, but he said that was.
It was the equipment.
Illegal or something, I don't know. So, where are we at on that? And there was a letter that Brandon Thomas sent, that says that equipment is theirs, and, and, so they also think that that resolution was not rescinded, or if it was, it was legal or whatever. I don't know why they think that that was, rescinding that motion did not take care of that problem. Anybody, anybody know on the council?
Do you, do you know what documentation, member Luke said, if we wanted documentation, I said, yes. Brandon text me, and he said, here's the authorization, that, that equipment belongs to us.
Are they talking about the fire department or the EMS portion?
The fire department.
I have a question, because I was involved with that, that, does the city still own a fire truck?
It owns all of them.
I think they own all of them. It belongs to the fire department, but it's a, it had a fire department, so.
The trucks.
The trucks, the fire department bought the trucks. Now, years ago, the city bought a truck or two, but, you know, it wasn't a big purchase back then. They bought it for the fire department, I don't remember who.
Paid fifteen thousand in fifteen, in two thousand and fifteen for the white truck.
How much?
Fifteen thousand.
Twenty fifteen, well, this is what I'm talking about before that. I don't know if the city buy that, or did the fire department buy?
City bought that.
City bought that, okay, so, so, my opinion, those belong to the city. They don't belong to the fire and rescue association, absolutely, because that, that resolution was rescinded. And I think we need to tell Brandon Thomas that same thing, that it was rescinded, that property is not theirs. They remove it, bring it back, and do not remove anything else.
I was going to, do you know, anybody know what he, when I asked for the documentation, do you know, anybody know what kind of documentation he would send?
Well, I'm on the fire department, and we've not had any discussion, to my knowledge, about this.
Well, he, he, the set documentation, he sent me, I'm sorry, the documentation, he sent me, as there are the reservation, to claim all of that equipment at the fire department, with sign like.
You know this?
Yes.
Oh, and you mean when they were trying to get the nonprofit designation?
No, what, what, what he's, what he's saying is that when I asked him for that print, to bring it back up here, he said, that's not, the city's, that's, that's mine, fire department's.
I don't think I ever signed anything for Brandon, at least I wasn't aware of it.
Well, it, it, I got, that's what he sent me, was, that statement right there, with all of those on it, and your signature down at the bottom, as the president.
You have that too, don't you?
She didn't sign it, her name's Sharon Riley, I said, Wardner, but she posted.
Yeah, but that wasn't, they sent it in, but we're talking about the one that Brandon sent, and it has Sharon's signature on the bottom.
I never signed anything for Brandon, so I don't know why he would.
See, that, that's what I'm thinking, see, the, the, the study, he, he, he's putting some underhanded stuff here, we got, we got, again, this attorney general looking into this stuff.
Yeah, show that to Sharon.
Can you pass that to Sharon, please?
That's what he sent us.
Hope he doesn't believe before he gets it.
Well, I, I think we need to send Mr. Thomas a official letter on the city letter ad, stating that, well, I kind of chotted this down. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, R two, granting transfer of the property buildings and equipment of the fire and fire department was rescinded at the April first city council meeting, by a vote of four to one to rescind.
Yeah, because I was willing, was against it.
Do not remove any equipment from premises, and if any has been removed, return it to you. Something like that needs to be sent to him. He has an attorney, if you don't like it, have his attorney send us something else, tell him it's why they, why they still think that's their equipment.
Yeah, I don't understand that at all.
And I don't understand how Luke got the printer that was voted to be, the city room.
Well, I think he took it down there, with the idea that people could use it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be open, open access at the fire department, as far as the community needing things printed, or, you know, that.
I don't think that ever happened.
That's never open access.
It kind of happened.
It's still in process, though.
We're, we're, we're just gonna take the laptop, it kind of thing, never.
I can't.
But he says it's.
I know, so.
Yeah, that one letter, isn't it?
Yeah, it's kind of.
It's a lot of the public, so it's a lot of all the public, how can they learn?
But there is. Right now, they're released, right now, it will be.
Put public on the laptop, they put access codes on, like prayer for the public, they're working on it, but it's just a slow, slow process, yeah.
Well, it was very much.
The property that belongs to the city needs to be back up here at the city room.
It was, the pro, the public access was very definitely, it was, we were moving toward it, and then the fire department computer was stolen, and that kind of put a kibosh on it for quite a while. So, but I know it's in process, I, Sharon and I haven't talked about it yet, but my phone number will be there, people will be able to call me, I will go in and open the door for them. I'm around most of the time in the town, so that they will, we work so they have a guest login, so they can use the computer, and then they can use the printer.
They're gonna charge so much for copies, too.
It's, they are, the fire department. Well, are you gonna, just enough to pay for the paper and the toner and stuff? Or are you gonna buy donation, we probably.
Well, there's really only one twenty-four hour place in Manhattan that the public can access, and that's the post office.
That's right.
Well, I don't think that printer was bought for that purpose, I, I, I don't think, I don't know that.
It was still, that was a lot of the.
No, it was, it was bought at the city room.
But the reason we bought the, the printer was because at that point in time, we were going to turn this room into a public access.
I think that probably still needs to be done, and I, I think, I think, I don't know where we're at on that. Mr. Mayor, do you have the cards and keys and everything you need to get in, wherever you need to go in the city?
I don't have them to the city room.
Well, then I think that needs to be remedied. Whoever got that, whoever's holding it out, that needs to be taken care of. I'll make a motion that the mayor has access to all the city equipment and rooms that he needs to.
Are you guys, are you guys listening, what, what's, what's these are about over here?
I made a motion, there are no seconds.
I'll take all my stuff out of there, the stuff you're not supposed to do, about anything about, and all that, I'll take all my stuff out there, and you have the office.
So, so what's in there that he can't see?
Me and her are the only ones that are supposed to have access to the customer stuff.
Who told you that?
The lawyer in the league told me that. We are the ones bonded for the customer information, not the mayor, the mayor has nothing to do with that stuff. We are the ones that are bonded to do all the work in there, not the mayor, all he needs to do is to look over us, and to be there if we are there, not by himself.
I don't agree, but I, I don't know legally if that's.
I talked to Kyle, the lawyer in the league.
Are they, are they the only two that can get in there?
Yes, at this moment, yes.
They're the only two that are bonded.
We're the only two that are bonded to get in there.
Are you?
Yeah, anyone, anyone that hasn't, wants to talk to me, or has, wants to look at anything, if they're in there, they can go in there when me or her is in there. There is records, any record you wanna look at, you can go in there, I'm there from two to four, Mondays and Fridays. There's, there's any record you wanna look at, they're in there, I will be there for you to look for them, but they cannot leave the office. You wanna copy of them, there is junk copier, in there, printer that they, fire department traded with us.
Abby, you want this?
I am.
Well, I don't know.
Is that, is that? Oh, and, oh, I don't know.
I don't know if we leak out of this article.
Well, we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll get a check, and we'll have to talk with you.
Is that any more than I got?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Because I, I don't, I, I want, I want the council to know, I don't try to do community cases illegally. I know I've been accused of having illegal meetings, but I can show you a council meeting, so I had clarified by the legality of the town, that's exactly what I thought.
Shoot, that's okay, that wasn't very. That's why I have my keys on.
So.
The shoes.
Sure is.
Yes, oh, yeah, that's the one I.
That's why I'm sitting out here.
I'll just withdraw my motion to figure out what the legalities are for.
Okay. That, that, that sounds like a good idea. Motion withdrawn.
Is that your motion to send Brandon his letter?
Uh, it wasn't actually a motion, but.
Okay.
I think that something needs to be done, but it was not a motion.
Okay, just making sure I'm keeping my eyes down and things crossed.
All right, with that, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If you're gonna talk to the council about, well, I talked to Ms. Ashton about two meetings ago?
About?
About refilling the toilet paper and soap and stuff like that for old buildings and basement.
Fifteen dollars.
Uh, it's only fifteen dollars a month. I don't think, I think that's a pretty fair price to handle old buildings.
So what do you, what do you think?
I would can, when, make sure the bathrooms are clean with toilet paper, soap, and old places, make sure that the sub pump is doing its job, as Ms. Zimmer says, asking to. And make sure that the humidifiers will be cleaned out when they need to be done.
What are the two places, this place and?
And, uh.
The shelves.
I feel fifteen dollars is pretty fair.
Plus he has to turn in the air conditioner.
Well, that's just part of the work.
Fifteen dollars a month, that don't sound even bad when you're on.
We used to make, they could point three dollars to do it.
Well, I make a motion. Yeah. Pay fifteen dollars a month for a middle-sized.
Everybody hear what's going on? Okay, all, all in favor of having Dylan do it?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Would you like to, have you write me up a, a, uh?
Okay.
Write me up what you want to do, like, like.
I don't know.
And get it to me with base.
So, I'm, I'm approved?
Yes.
Yes, you're approved.
No, you, that's, you do it.
How to get through.
Riley does the best he can, and I'll type it up, just maybe.
Okay, well, I wanna thank everybody for a good and pleasant meeting.
Yes.
I think he's accomplished that.
You don't want to be all kind anymore.
Oh, no, we gotta have you.
Yeah, we gotta have you, you can't, you heard us now.
If, if we're adjourning, it's eight twenty-seven right now.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I said it.
Aye. Everybody, favor. Aye.
Well, it's a time to meet.
Is this, is this you guys still need them, though? What's it say?
You don't know.
I guess that, I guess size.
I'll draw a line on the way out. I'm real.
Yeah.
And there.
What we do is work. So, I'm like, I like you on the. Yeah, I think it's.
Hey, guys, let's get over here.
You mean, but I would.
I don't know. They go down so sure.
I know. I mean, it's.
Between the time the resolution was passed and the resolution was suspended, that it has a left. It's hard still.
Cause it'd be, we're two thousand four, two thousand nine, we're not right now. Yeah.
Well.
This is not a service number. I need the people by now, I mean, I'm. I would like to be here.
Why would we, why would we give a ten to them and then harden you? And we're giving this to the churches. I think. No, no, not to this, but certain that they in the church. Oh, my son. You're trying to say that you're not.
No, this.
She said they charged ten.
It's not. All, all.
Yeah. You guys want to start on with?
Yeah, I don't know. I wish that could not give it yet. I don't expect.
You hit me and I had sex. Yeah, I know.
Oh, well, they were there. But you.
Why?
No, we're in church.
Yeah.
But if I see that song.
Same food, makes you cheese.
They're gonna go to work. That's the hour. I'll get there.
That's not like a Walmart, oh, I must, well, I'm armed.
Yeah, it, it might be.
It's like getting milk.
It, it, it is. Yes. You know, I know that.
What, what, what the hell?
Here in Michael's family, and all of a sudden, my house was, it says, as the old guy, he went in and out, he like, oh, yeah, that was why. Uh, no, they asked me with you how hard you are from the work and part of the brain. That's why your end there is working so hard out here. If something or anything else, like, not, I'm saying, no, no. As they are not in. You need to look into it. I'm sure my. Yeah, I don't know. And it's. I checked, and it was, I know. And that was when I. Then this would have gone again. Because. People, we don't have.
I was gonna make you. Well. I know.
I know.
I think it's, uh, I think, yeah. I said, should. I probably do like. Yeah, and then they get more services. So, I'm not the way. So, it, you know.